Welcome everybody to the Town Council Meeting, Monday, October 7th, 2024, 7:00 PM, McKinnon Council Chambers. Agenda Item 1, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda Item Number 2, Roll Call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Chenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Excused.
Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excused.
And Counselor Rivas.
Present.
We have a quorum, moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of September 23rd, 2024, Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Where a second?
Second.
Is a motion a second? Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works, Counselor Chenier.
Mr. Chair, thank you. We had a meeting last week and tonight's agenda items have all been voted on favorable by Subcommittee for the DPW Subcommittee.
Thank you, Counsel. Moving on to Education and Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not had a meeting and no meetings scheduled yet.
Moving on to General Government, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report, no meeting scheduled, and no meeting currently.
Moving on to D, Planning and Developing, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had no meeting in the last two weeks, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 17th.
Moving on to Protections of Property, we have no report at this time. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 5, Chairman's Announcements, I got a couple of quick issues. I'd like to just extend an attaboy out to the Town Manager, the Finance Department, our Finance Director Michelle, who did a fantastic job on the auction. People want to know, what is that all about? It wasn't too long ago that this council, a few of the councilors toured with the Health Director and the Maritza, we had a little group that we went around looking at properties. The town of Southbridge had many properties that they had to insure, and they had to secure, and they weren't on the tax rolls. Well, then, the new Town Manager gets on board, the new Finance Director gets on board, everybody's on the same page, and then we have an auction to liquidate these properties, and we've got approximately $156,000 coming in for the sale of the properties. But the add-on to that is these properties are now going to be added to the tax rolls, where people are going to pay taxes on those properties, and in some cases, the insurance the town carried on some of these buildings are no longer going to have to be paid out. It was a win-win all the way around. I think the Finance Department and the Town Manager deserve a round of applause. I mean, fantastic job, Jack. I got to tell you. These are the kind of things that are happening in the town of Southbridge that, for some reason, they just weren't happening. And now that the wheels are turning and we're very stable in the Finance Department, I think you're going to see more and more things happen in a timely manner, and less headaches going forward as we continue to build the Team Southbridge. One other issue that I want to comment, it was a fantastic household hazardous waste drop-off event. Roland Larochelle, Chairman of the Board of Health, the Board of Health, and a special shout-out from Maritza, who did a fantastic job. If anybody went down or drove by, they saw tons of cars lining all the way down Gulfwood Road, just taking hazardous waste off of the landfill and out of the receptacles and actually disposing them properly. Maritza, Roland, great job. Thank you very much. I have no further announcements. I'm going to go on to Town Manager's announcements. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo what the Chairman said about the Hazardous Waste Day, again, many thanks, because this was the first hazardous waste day that we undertook as a community separate from our former Casella contract. So this is, it took a lot of planning, because before it was, a lot of it was handled by Casella when we just were present. This was actually an event that was very successful, and we'll expand on it. Approximately 170 cars dropped off that day, and kudos to the staff, Teddy Tetro as well, and Mike Julian, who were present from the Building Department to assist in that day, and other town employees that set that up. So we thank them all for the hard work on that. Just a reminder that hydrant flushing still will be ongoing for the next several weeks. Again, we encourage you to check your water prior to washing any clothes. If you have any concerns, contact the Water Department. Announcement that municipal curbside participants, those that participate in our curbside trash pickup, the collection of yard waste will begin on October 14th and will continue through Saturday, November 30th. Yard waste is to be placed at the curb on the date of your curbside collection. A reminder that yard waste should be put in open-top containers or in paper yard waste bags, and no plastic bags will be collected. And finally, a reminder that early voting will be starting on Saturday, October 19th. Absentee ballots are now available in the Town Clerk Office for the state election that will be held on November 5th. Again, the early voting, which will begin on Saturday, October 19th, will continue through Friday, November 1st. The hours of early voting will be those of the normal Town Hall hours. On the Saturday, October 19th, and Saturday, October 26th, those hours will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Just another aside, we will be having the ramp fixed to the side of the building over this weekend. It was supposed to happen over this past weekend, however, they had to reschedule that. So there'll be some temporary repairs made to that ramp. And the last day to register to vote will be Saturday, October 26th, 2024, and that's all I have right now. Thank you.
If I could just revert back to Chairman's announcements, a lot of citizens have been asking why all of the things in the drains and the silt fencing going up. East Main Street is going to be renovated, water valve is going to be replaced, drainage is going to be replaced. It's going to be quite a messy deal as far as redoing, resurfacing. It's going to be going from Morris Street to the Golden Greek Restaurant, but it'll be another road redone in the town of Southbridge, on top of all the other ones that have been paved in the past three to four weeks. But it's progress, roads are being done. We're proud of some of the work that's being done, and I think Rich Benoit at DPW, again, good guy at the helm, got a good team concept down there, and he seems to be getting things done in a timely manner. But that's the East Main Street project is getting full swing. Moving on to Presentations, we have one presentation that was canceled, and we have the Proclamation for the New Hope Incorporated. As Chairman of the Council, I'll ask Jim and Rivas, who is a member, to read the proclamation. Jim and Rivas?
This time, I'm going to invite the Executive Director of New Hope, Deanna Mancetta, to come up, and staff that she's going to present. Presented to New Hope Inc., resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas New Hope Inc. provides a toll-free 24/7 helpline, emergency shelter, counseling services, community-based advocacy, court-based advocacy, supervised visitation, intimate partner abuse prevention education, and prevention education and outreach to those affected by domestic violence who reside in the town of Southbridge and 40 other communities in South Central and Southeastern Massachusetts. Whereas New Hope Inc. understands that domestic violence does not discriminate, therefore serves people of all identities, including but not limited to gender, identity, age, race, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, and people living with disabilities. And whereas New Hope Inc. engages our communities to build a movement free of all violence, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the Town of Southbridge recognizes the critical work that New Hope does to support those affected by domestic violence in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and recognizes the efforts of New Hope's staff who tirelessly advocate for and assist survivors of domestic violence. And witness therefore, on this day, Monday, October 7th, 2024, this council wishes to congratulate and celebrate New Hope Inc. as they kick off Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the town of Southbridge. By Scott S. Lazo, Chairman, Southbridge Town Council. I want to present this to Deanna and the staff, and this issue is very personal to me as a survivor of domestic violence. I appreciate all of the work that you all do every single day, and I'm honored to be presenting this to you. Deanna is going to say a few words and present the staff and give you some stats on domestic violence.
Thank you so much, the Counselor. I really appreciate us for having us today. And while the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it should not be just one month that we take the opportunity to really honor the lives that we have lost, as well as really just being aware of what's happening in our state. We know that one in three women are affected by domestic violence. We know that one in four men are also impacted by domestic violence. And we also know that, you know, it happens to trans folks and gender non-conforming folks at a higher rate than their counterparts. So this is something that we really want to make sure that you all hear about, that we talk about, because that's part of the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We want to talk about these things to domestify the opportunities, to like really raise awareness about the issue. We also just want to mention that the Jane Doe, the Massachusetts State Coalition Against Sexual and Domestic Violence, every year, they track the domestic homicides and suicides that happen in our state. And unfortunately, this year, we are higher numbers than we had last year. Last year, we lost 24 lives due to domestic violence. This year, and it hasn't ended yet. Hopefully, no other ones, but we are already at 29 lives that we have lost. And I just want to name a couple of the lives that we lost in the Worcester County area. So one of our names is Visleen Garnier, Jeffrey Carr, Anna Maria Martinez, Serquia Acosta, Maria Teresa, and Mayancela Aloha. These are some of the folks that we have lost. Again, 29 lives we have lost in the state of Massachusetts as of today, compared to last year that were 24. And just to give you a little bit more numbers and statistics, because I believe that that's very important for us to know, is that every 29 minutes or so, 24, 24 minutes, there's someone impacted by domestic violence in our state and also in the country. So we're right there with them. I also want to take just the opportunity to thank the New Hope staff, especially Lily and Ashley, who are here in our office in Southbridge, but just to the rest of the staff of New Hope, and the Eagle Riders, who have been super supportive to us. They donated this year $2,000 to the cost as well, but they're local riders and they're supporting our cause as well. So again, thank you so much for having us. Really appreciate it. And Jasmine sits on our board as well, so we really appreciate all the work that you have done on really bringing awareness to Southbridge on our behalf.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, because I think it's important for the people in our community to know. I know they gave you the official version. I'll give you what our relationship is and our partnership that we've had with them for many, many years. It really started in 2019. There was some grant money available. We had an advocate assigned, but they split time between Southbridge and Webster. Now, the advocate has an office at our police department. I think it's important for our elected officials to know that. She works many hours for our police department. She handles about 37 calls per month, 30 to 70 calls per month. And what that means is whenever there's a domestic violence incident in our community, we have an advocate at our police station, working through New Hope, that goes and responds and goes and reaches out to these victims that may not feel comfortable talking to a police officer, a male, in the middle of the night, dressed in uniform, can be a little bit intimidating. And we actually have a victim advocate that goes, reaches out to them, they meet off-site if they don't feel comfortable coming to the police station. And this has been going on for several years. And one of the things I get and that I'm most proud of in our community is when I'm out and I talk to victims, or just other people in the community, and they say, "I can't even believe that you guys have an advocate that goes to someone's house and meets with them." And I say, "Well, it's not us. It's New Hope." And they weren't even familiar with the program or the system that you have in place until the advocate from New Hope calls them from our police station. And it's just important that everybody knows that. It's all funded by a grant, costs the town nothing. There were some gaps in coverage over the years because the grant gets canceled or moved or they give the money to someone else. But it's just important that we keep this position in our community, and I was very, very happy when Jasmine called me and asked me, "You know, you think it's a good idea if we get New Hope?" I said, "Yes, get them here, get them in front of the council." So again, nothing to do with us, our department, it's all about New Hope, but thank you for what you girls, what you women, and the men do in our community to help us. So we appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. I would just like to take a moment on behalf of the Council to thank you for the New Hope gift bags, and the brochure is very self-explanatory, did a great job. I don't know if Counselor Rivas would like to get this on the town's sign outside or as an awareness of this week. Really appreciate that. Thank you very much again.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Counsel Chenier?
If I may, I just would like to thank the group, New Hope, for taking this time and assisting this community with domestic violence issues. The average person out there, as far as I'm concerned, thinks that domestic violence is violence, is beating somebody up or ultimately leading to somebody's death or severe injuries. And it's more than just that. It starts with the verbal abuse, the mental abuse, those kind of things. But the average person out there doesn't understand, they only know the end result. And groups like yourself is such an asset for our community to assist the community and the police department in bringing this cause to the front. And I would like to thank you very much for the hard work that you do, and I would like to thank the police department for the hard work they do. I listen and I hear, and I have people telling me of the work that is done, and it's a combination of you and the police officers and the professionalism that is shown by all. And again, I would like to thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you. Any other councils? If no other councils, thank you again. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, Citizens' Forum. Are there any citizens at this time that would like to address the Council on any issues that are not on the agenda tonight? Take your name and address.
Hi there. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. However, I'm coming to you from official business tonight, that would be for the town, for Southbridge Holiday Visions. Every year, for I think about 15 years or so, I tend to come up here and make a plea for help, and this year probably is no different, but we're also going to talk about the parade and a few other things. So this year, if you're interested, our annual holiday parade and tree lighting will take place on Saturday, November 30th, a little bit later than usual, because of the way Thanksgiving falls. It's always the Saturday after Thanksgiving. We have been hard at work in the warehouse, trying to get items back together, renovated, refurbished, and ready to go out on the streets of town. On the streets of town requires a lot of help. We have these cute little cards we'll pass along to all the councilors, because I know they'll want to help. Some have in the past, and hopefully more will in the present. We have what we call decoration distribution, because those little elves and snowmen and reindeer and all, they don't just get themselves out there. It takes a lot of hard work, and as I've gotten older in the years, it takes two sometimes now to, it definitely takes two, for me to do what I did 15 years ago. And while my family is wonderful at getting out there, as you know, I've got some good elves, we really need more help, especially this year and going forward. So if anyone is interested in participating, we hope that you will check out our Facebook, Southbridge Holiday Visions. You will perhaps send us an email at southbridgeholidayvisions@yahoo.com to get more information, or perhaps you'll pick up one of these cute little cards with our distribution, which will start the weekend of November 9th. I know, it's so early, but it's not, because as I said, they don't get there by themselves, and if we don't get enough help, we have to keep going. So we'll work on Saturday, we'll work on Sunday, and potentially, we'll work the weekend of the 16th as well, and that will only give us a short time before the parade to get ready for all those festivities that take place on the Common. Again, many hands may light work, and I would truly, truly appreciate for those of you who enjoy it so much to get out there and put your hands together with ours to make this happen. You can also find out on our website, or on our Facebook, excuse me, hours that we go in and do some work in the workshop. The workshop is off on Mill Street, Old Warehouse, thanks to the generosity of you guys still, the town's still taking care of the storage of all those units. We have a place to go and paint, create, as I said, refurbish what we have, and after being out in the weather for a couple of months, it needs to be done. So you can look for information on the Facebook, you can call me directly, my number's pretty much everywhere, and it's listed on Facebook, which is a, for those of you who aren't familiar too much with Facebook, you don't have to be a member to actually see a public space. So we have, our Facebook is public, so you can just go to Facebook, Southbridge Holiday Visions, and you'll find us there with the information. So that's on how you can help us and how you can take part in being part of making this town really shine during the holiday season. I'm amazed, every year, I see more and more people that are coming from out of town, who are coming year after year, and they come up to us and say, "This is really cool. We make it a point to come to Southbridge during this time because we know that we're going to get to see all these wonderful decorations and really feel the holiday spirit." So be part of that vision, be part of the 2024 vision. And whether you help or not, it's time to join the parade. So now you have the opportunity to also be part of that portion. You can enter a float, you can enter a vehicle, you can't walk in it, but you can ride in it. We run about, it's about a two-mile circle that goes on that evening, starting at 5:00. We ask that you register with us. Again, very simple, send us an email, reach out to us, let us know you want to participate, whether it's a group, a single, an organization, your family. We have year-after-year families come in. It's really easy. Decorate, come on out and be part of, again, the 2024 vision. These cards will be left here at the Town Hall, they will be in certain locations, the libraries and such throughout town, gives you some information. And reach out, you know? We're very friendly people there at the Southbridge Holiday Visions Workshop, and we would love to have you participate this year and really make Southbridge shine, because, you know, I hear from the other towns, "Why can't we be more like Southbridge?" And you can, you just got to work it. So we need everybody to pitch in as best you can and be part of this. So thank you for your time this evening. I'm going to send these off to council, they can take one or whatever, pass it along, put it in a good place. If you can't use it, give it to somebody who might, and we look forward to everyone's contributions. Speaking of which, you can donate to the nonprofit, Southbridge Holiday Visions. It is a 501(c)(3) based on the town. The checks go to the town, or if you have product, if you have paint or wood or something that you think we might be interested, you can do that too. So feel free to, again, whatever part you can play, be part of the vision. So thank you.
We'd just like to thank Denise Clements and the team, or I should say, an army that she usually puts together every year. Please, if anybody wants to get involved, contact us, contact Denise, there's a lot of ways you can get involved. But again, thanks, thank you Denise Clements and your team. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak at this time? 20 Agenda Items, anything that's not on the agenda. If not, I'm going to move on to Agenda Item Number 9, Vote to Award DPW Boiler Controls to Cox Engineering for $20,786 and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Chenier.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Discussion?
Mr. Chair, this was voted unanimously by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion by Counsel? Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. What exactly are they doing on the boiler system? What work are they doing?
Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, through you. This would be the installation of a control system so that they can monitor the temperatures and make sure that the boilers are operating. Currently, we do not have a system in place to monitor those, so if the boiler was to go down over a weekend or overnight in cold weather, something were to occur, we have no alarm system. This would allow the system to be remote to both the DPW Director and the Director of Operations, that if there was a malfunction in the boiler itself, that they would be notified. So it's a control system to monitor the boiler system. And we do have two new boilers being installed currently. One is 90% done, and the other one will be commencing.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all of them in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 10, Vote to Approve of FY25 Untreated Road Salt Contract to Eastern Salt for $75, excuse me, $73 per ton pursuant to the OSD state bid list and Allow the Town Manager to Sign All Related Paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Counsel Chenier.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly.
This was unanimously approved by all present at the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to 11, Vote to Pay, excuse me, Vote to Pay a Prior Year Fiscal Bill FY24 Water Department Global Data Systems Invoice for $687.71 from FY25 Account 610450-58300025583, Tech Support Capital.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion a second? Discussion?
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Unanimous, any further discussion? This will take a, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Marquetti, roll call.
Why would, we have a management team, company running the water department, why would they not pay this bill?
This bill was not sent to, there was a delay in getting the bill over to them when we closed the books, so that came in late for the last fiscal year. So they do manage it, it was, this is not a normal bill that normally comes in. We did upgrades to the Wi-Fi in that building to get coverage in different areas of the building where there was no coverage, and it just was sent by GDS late, and it just got overlooked.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? My counsel takes two-thirds vote, roll call.
Counselor Chenier?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
And Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
Unanimous, all present. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, Vote to Enter Into An Agreement With Time Bond For Professional Engineering Services For A Stormwater Asset Management Project Which Will Complete Eligibility For The Mass DEP/WT Grant Opportunity And Allow The Town Manager To Sign All Related Paperwork.
So moved.
Motion by Chenier, seconded by Daniels. Discussion? If no discussion, all those in favor?
Opposed.
Unanimous, all present.
Opposed.
One opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry, one opposed. Counsel Marquetti. Motion passes. Moving on to 13, Vote to Extension Of Customer Service Agreement With Uniformed Vote to the extension of customer service agreement with unifurst at a 5% annual increase for item cost and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Daniels. Discussion?
This was unanimously approved by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Council Rivas?
I think I missed this portion from the meeting, I'm just curious, just to, from the town manager, just a quick overview.
It's the unifurst for the DPW workers.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 14. Vote DPW request to redesignate and reallocate the remaining funds in sewer capital account, project number 74860, repair concrete platform and docks with the remaining balance of $1,545.66 to be used for purchasing computer equipment for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $1,253, remaining balance of $292.66 to be closed, closed out to the sewer fund retainage earnings.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second, discussion?
This was approved unanimously by the Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Counselor Mark Hettie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just going over this, the paperwork on this one is Hannah Prescott, why would she be the one signing off on this? Shouldn't that be something that you would sign off on?
Well...
Mr. Town Manager?
Where are you seeing that she's signed off? I just have the invoice on that.
All right, I'm looking at, is this Agenda Item Number 14, correct?
Yeah.
And project summary, client Hannah Prescott has signed off on it. If this is part of that, you know, pardon me if I'm on the wrong one, but I think this is part of 14.
No, we just have this one invoice for 14.
Okay.
The invoice for the computer.
Well then, what am I looking at here?
I think it's the next one that you're looking at, where it says name.
PC Enterprises, okay. Then I'll wait, sorry, I'll wait for the next one. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 15. Vote to DPW request to redesignate and reallocate the remaining funds in sewer capital account, project number 64230, electrical updates at WWTP with a remaining balance of $17,337.70 to be used to the DPW conference room upgrades in the amount of $3,326.25 with the remaining balance of $14,011.45, closing out the sewer fund retainage earnings. Entertaining motion to recommend the town manager, the town council for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion, a second, discussion?
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Council Mark Hettie?
So is this the one that has Hannah Prescott?
It does, and I'm not sure why she would sign it as the client. It was just a proposal, so it's not the actual contract, it's a proposal, so she signed off on it.
Okay, all right, so this is something that you would sign off on?
I would sign off on any contract, correct, yes.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 16. Vote to authorize the town manager to enter into an electric service agreement with the most responsive and responsible comprehensive supplier to provide all requirements, power supply, as an alternative to basic service for consumers within the municipality. Contract to form approved by KP Law allows the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? Council Mark Hettie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So when will the, when will the community start seeing the benefits of this?
So I did have a call with the Good Energy representatives on October 3rd. We have a pre-bid conference scheduled for October 15th, no. We will have the indicatives, which will tell us what the anticipated price may be on October 9th, what bids do either October 15th or October 16th. We are, we are on target for a January start date, so we are still on target for the January start date with that October bid. They did say that we are in a good position and well-positioned for the bid at this time, especially with the way that Eversource and National Grid have, they do their rates on November 1st and May 1st, so we're in a well-positioned for this. The electrical services agreements have been well-vetted by KP Law, Rick Holland. Rick Holland has worked with Good Energy on all those electric service agreements, he has reviewed them all, and we anticipate a number of companies to bid on the pricing. So we will have, this will allow us to lock in on that date, and we will be on target for that January start date.
All right, thank you very much.
Council Rivas?
Will we have sort of like, you know, public hearings, or are there, how is this going to be rolled out so that residents understand what they'd be signing up to?
Yeah, absolutely. The, once we get the bids in place, then we'll, they will provide marketing. We've already, I've already talked to Charlie in the cable access, and I told Good Energy too that we would make that available. We'll do a number of methods to get the information out, and that's all part of their program to roll that out. But we do have to do quite an aggressive marketing campaign to let people know that they're, they can opt out of it, but the pricing should be much better than what the National Grid and price should be, or other suppliers.
And in multiple languages?
I would, yes, they do multiple languages.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Council Kelly?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, is this a, does this cover distribution as well as supply, or is it going to be just supply?
It's supply.
So National Grid would still be distributor?
Distributor, right. It's no different than any of the companies that you can sign up with, it's just a municipal rate that we get a better pricing.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 17. Vote to ratify Amendment 7 to the Agreement for Operations Maintenance and Management Services between the Town of Southbridge, Mass. and Viola Water North American Northeast LLC to extend the agreement through January 30th, 2025, allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shinia, seconded by Kelly?
This was unanimously approved by the DPW Subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 18. Review amending the Southbridge zoning bylaw, Section 8-7, adult-use marijuana establishments to allow the, for the hours of operation except between 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM. This is the third reading. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 19. The adoption, vote the following amendment to the Town of Southbridge zoning bylaws. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. The Town Council of the Town of Southbridge, in the exercise of powers conferred on it by Section 8 of Article LXXIX of the Amendments to the State Constitution and by its own Home Rule Charter, does hereby adopt and enact the following. amend the Town of Southbridge zoning bylaws, Section 8, Special Regulations, 8.7, Adult-Use Marijuana Establishments, 8.7-3, Requirements for Adult-Use Marijuana Establishments, Subsection B. This will be abbreviated AUME. AUME facilities may only be involved in the uses permitted by its definition and may not include other businesses or services. No smoking, burning, application, or consumption of any product containing marijuana or marijuana-related products shall be permitted on the premises unless expressly permitted under this law and permitted by a state law or regulation. The prohibition on onsite consumption shall also include private social clubs or any other establishment which allows for social consumption of marijuana or marijuana products on the premises, regardless of whether the product is sold to consumers on site. Hours of operation for any AUME retail establishments shall be established by the planning board, but in no event shall said facilities be open to the public between the hours of 11:00 PM and 8:00 AM, including home delivery services. For AUME facilities that can demonstrate that they comply with the agricultural exemption under MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3, must still apply for site plan approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I take it there was no communication, no, you know, give and take, we'll give you the extra couple hours, you give us something back and forth, nothing like that, just going to extend their hours and that's it?
Mr. Town Manager?
So we are bound by the host agreements, and that gives us very little latitude on what we can negotiate now.
Okay.
Financially or any other concessions.
How much money are we receiving from the marijuana?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay, I should have asked earlier, sorry about that.
Yeah.
If you could get that number to me, because I've asked a few times and no one can seem to give me an answer on it, but I'd appreciate it, thank you.
Any further discussion by any of the councils?
Mr. Chairman, did we get a motion and a second on that one?
I'm sorry, we need a motion, you're right.
I made that motion.
Motion by Council Shinia, is that second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Rivas. We're back into discussion. Any further discussion? If not, roll call?
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Lozo?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
No.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
And Counselor Rivas?
Yes.
And Counselor Shinia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 20. Council's forum. Counselor Mark Hettie, vote to stop on the right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, at the last meeting, the town manager mentioned that he was going to be meeting with the owner of the Elm Center next door, and I was just wondering how that meeting went, if we have any updates on it, on the work that he is supposed to be doing?
He did contact me by phone, and there's going to have to be further conversations relative to what our possible actions may need to be on that building. I'll just leave it at that right at the moment.
Okay, doesn't sound good, thank you. Second of all, I did ask about what's going on with regard to the fire station, so could you give me an update on that?
Yes, I will, I did meet with Dean, we are working up some financial, and then we will be scheduling a joint meeting with the council and Fire Station Building Committee to update the plans and next steps. We need to speed this up faster, sooner than later, because with the new stretch code that's going to come in place, it could put additional costs on the project, so we will be scheduling that with the chairman of the council.
Okay, thank you. Also, I know that the chairman of the council's been having meetings on the animal kennel. Is there any update that you could give me on that, please?
The last meeting, it went to design. There was a site visit, we've had meetings with the committee and the architect, so the dog officer and everybody put together a think tank where what they did was, they designed the needs of what we're going to be doing, the vision of where we're going to do it. We located the site, which is at the Southbridge DPW. It's a moving fence on the backside where we would stay in the security area of the DPW. It's a more viable site than the previous one, and right now it sits at McClure Engineering and the architect to do the actual design blueprints for the site.
Okay, do you see a possible date that it might actually be built?
We're looking, the way it's looking, I think we're going to break ground in the springtime.
Okay, thank you. And I have had a few people have talked, asked me about East Main Street, and some of the concerns that I've heard is that it's getting very late in the season. There's not going to be a problem with that? As late getting into October already?
If there's one thing we learned by the Main Street experience, you don't pave in the wintertime.
That's right.
So that decision will come as they're doing the valves. If we run into delays and stuff, it might get paved in the spring, I'm not saying that, but we're optimistic. If it goes to spring, I would rather wait.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we all learned that together.
Yep, thank you, that's all I have.
I think with the design of that project, with the sidewalks and all that, there's a lot of pre-construction that would even, before we would even think about paving, so I mean, there's a lot of work that they could do over the winter that we're not even close to even thinking about paving until, until spring, summer, anyway.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to echo previous sentiments about the hazardous waste day. It was well-run, well-put-together. I'm glad to see that the town was able to get it up and running and that the town's people took advantage of it. It was a particular item of mine that I wanted to see included in the work with all the conversion to trash pickup and that sort of thing, so I was happy to see it up and running, and I'm very grateful and thankful to those people who, who had a hand in it, too many to mention, but they were all there Saturday morning giving up their time. I saw them all, spoke with a few, and very grateful for them for putting that on, so thank you to all of you. I'd just like to say that my thoughts are with people in North Carolina, in Tennessee, in Georgia, and in Florida from the previous hurricane, and again, with the next hurricane coming up into Tampa, I have friends and relatives in the Tampa area and a little south, and it doesn't look good, so my thoughts and prayers are there as well. And I encourage the townsfolk, if you have anything that you can do in terms of donations, the American Red Cross is a good way to go in terms of donations to the relief effort, and also stay alert to various citizens groups that are looking for solid donations, and by solid, I mean anything from toilet paper to water to foodstuffs, they're going to need a lot, so thank you, that's all I have.
Counsel Shinia?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Rivas?
I have a few items. I attended the Worcester Regional Transit Authority's 50th anniversary, celebrating their services and really their staff and the drivers who, you know, keep us connected to the hub in Worcester, and we did get this plaque that they gave all of the communities, so I want to give that to our town manager. That is the original, the original bus that they had on that day for people to kind of take photos and take a look inside. It hasn't changed inside very much, but yeah, the colors are much different now, but yeah. So they were really just honoring their drivers and their staff for all of the work that they do to keep the WRTA running in our communities. I also wanted to mention the Town Manager Substance Abuse Task Force and a new service, and I had missed their grand opening, but Bridge to Hope Program on 219 Everett Street came to our meeting and presented about their services. It's really important that we have these type of services in our community to really help our residents who are struggling with substance abuse and families who, you know, who also struggle with their loved ones' substance abuse. So I just want to read just the first paragraph. At Bridge to Hope, "We offer free accessible peer-led spaces for individuals in recovery from substance use as well as families and loved ones affected by addiction. Our center provides opportunities to both offer and receive support in a community environment." And they list a multitude of services, which I won't go into. They have daytime hours, and, I don't know, Town Manager, you can correct me, I think it was 9:00 to 5:00 PM that they mention Monday through Friday. They will, they do outreach into the community, and again, it's a peer-led model, so meaning other... and again, it's a peer-led model, so meaning other people in recovery, really helping each other and creating an environment where people have help at all, you know, different times of the day. It isn't just AA meetings, it's really a holistic approach to substance abuse. And I, I look forward to a lot of their programming, helping many of our community members that are struggling. I think this is a great service that offers more than just drop-in meetings. They really have a lot of comprehensive services, and so I, you know, I encourage people to check it out. Again, anyone can drop in, it is a walk-in, you don't have to make an appointment, and they will be giving us a tour. So through the town manager, maybe other counselors might want to, you know, attend with us and check out their facilities and see what, what they're offering. It's in the previous location where the VFW was, and they've kept the pool table, people can come in and just socialize, you know, and, you know, and stay sober. So I wanted to mention that. Our, our Substance Abuse Task Force will also be tabling at the Stars of the Future Trunk or Treat, or their Spooky Hoops Clinic on October twenty-first, as well as the Friday, the twenty-sixth, the Harrington Hospital Trunk or Treat from four to six. We'll be supporting that, those two events for our community, and we'll have information on the Substance Abuse Red Ribbon Week to, you know, to really support our students in, in preventing, you know, our, our youngsters from, from getting involved in, in any type of substances, so. Yeah, so we'll be doing that. I also wanted to mention, because it is Hispanic Heritage Month, and one of our community members was recognized by the United Latinas, statewide organization for extraordinary Latinas in two thousand and twenty-four. Carla de la Cruz Davila, who is on the school committee, was given an award for community, connecting communities for her work as co-founder of the Wellstorm, and they are the people who are responsible for the community fridges in our, in our town. I just wanted to, to recognize her recognition, her hard work. And speaking of the school committee, they have a meeting tomorrow night at seven PM here in the chambers. One of the important topics on their agenda will be discussing question two on eliminating the MCAS requirement for graduation. So if that is of interest to you, and certainly as voters, we should really be, you know, educated on all of these different questions. They will be discussing that tomorrow night, right here in the chambers, and that's all I have, thank you.
Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First, I'd like to thank Steve Gregoire of Whitewater, who gave me a tour of our, our drinking water treatment plant and our watershed this morning. He took me into the plant, showed me how the water enters the plant, how it gets treated, how it gets filtered, when he went through with me all the checks and balances they have to ensure that the water is safe. The water apparently is monitored twenty-four seven, they have all sorts of electronic means of doing that. I have to say that, and then we went out and looked at the, at the watershed, which was quite impressive. I can't remember the exact acreage, he told me, but I think it's in the neighborhood of almost three thousand acres where I wa, where our, our four main reservoirs sit. Very, very impressive, pristine land, absolutely beautiful, as a matter of fact. I can, after, after seeing that tour, I have to say I, I am very, very confident that Southbridge has probably some of the best drinking water in the area, if not the state. I'm very confident that our water is safe and clean and far exceeds both national and Massachusetts environmental regula, uh, safe drinking water regulations. So I commend the, the work that they're doing up there, it's fantastic. Another issue that I would like to bring up is at the last, at our last meeting, there was mention of a meeting between some of the members of our council and the school board and Desi from, and it seemed at that point in time that there was a lot of positive news about perhaps, you know, getting on a path towards ending receivership. I commented at the time that I felt that we needed to have a, a deadline for, a hard deadline for Desi to turn over the school, schools back to us. And then, of course, I had been away the week before, and in catching up with some of the news that I had missed, I came across a Worcester Telegram and Gazette article. I'm not sure anybody had seen this, but this apparently took place after our meeting, after the meeting that the, the council members were at with Desi, and it was published on September eighteenth in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette. The headline is "Southbridge Schools Face Long Road Back Out of State Receivership." The lead line says, "Returning local control over, over Southbridge schools is still likely several years away as the state-controlled receivership of the district stretches close to a decade." I read through the article, I was quite disturbed by the article, frankly. It made me quite angry, because it doesn't, it seems that, from what I can gather here, there's, there, there are two different stories coming out, alright? So we have, for instance, Dr. Valar quoted as saying that the district is still several years of improved test scores away from exiting, exiting receivership, several years. The state's already been involved, coming up on nine years, alright? And they still have a problem with teacher retention, one of the worst teacher retention rates in the state, one of the worst graduation rates in the state. My, my point in bringing this up is that I would like our council members to read this article. I don't want to belabor this, but I think we all need to get on the same page with both the school committee, the town council, and Desi as to when we are going to get out of receivership. Because as I said last time, our economic development is absolutely contingent upon the end of receivership. So that's all I have to say on the subject, thank you.
If I could just comment on that, I too share that anger. The acting commissioner was optimistic, Juan is optimistic, the council chairman was optimistic, the town manager, everybody in the room seemed to be on the same page on training, school committee upgrades, and then all of a sudden, Mr. Valar had to have an opinion in the Telegram and Gazette. I do not think, and after that article, I do not think he is the answer to a transitional receiver. My plan on sitting down with the chairman of the school committee, vice chair, because of this article, it stirred more anger, and I think it stirred good. But that seems to be the way of the receiver lately, and I don't understand why. I thought everybody in the room was ready to move forward, we're going to work together, we're going to do whatever it takes to get them schools back, all because of the reasons that you've mentioned. Another article came out, after nine years or whatever it's been, years they've been in charge, we have the lowest MCAS scores in the state. So maybe we should take them over, because they're not getting the job done by those MCAS scores. That was one of the criteria of how they took us over, had something to do with the scoring. So I think moving forward, I think the school committee and the council will be having a joint meeting, and I don't think it's going to be on buildings. It'll be on other subjects, but we need to get together and get the community together, but I think most of all, the elected officials. It seems like he's going in a different direction than the rest of the people that were in the room.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out, Mr. Dr. Valar has a significant conflict of interest in this matter. The man makes almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. He does not have an interest in coming out of receivership.
I agree. I'm going to go to the vice chairman, and I'm going to go back to the manager. Manager has a one quick issue.
Thank you. I really didn't have much to say, but I, to the previous conversation, I, I share the same sentiment, and I think there's just that one piece in the way, the conflict you're saying, and I, I see better days ahead. And I didn't see Commissioner Johnston talking so out of school in that article, just Dr. Valar, so I agree, and thank you for, for sharing that, but nothing else further tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right, just one quick message from the manager, the town manager.
Thank you, thank you for indulging me. I should have stated this during the town manager's announcements. I just would ask that the community hold in your thoughts and prayers the family of firefighter Michael Struber, whose son, ten years old, passed away of cancer last week after a long battle with cancer. So I just ask that we all keep his wife, his son Dom, and our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. And just want to express our deepest condolences to his family on behalf of the town of Southbridge during this difficult time. Thank you.
At this time, could we have a moment of silence for that young man? Thank you very much. Moving on to twenty-one, discussion of next meeting date. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. The next meeting date is Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM in the council chambers.
Twenty-two, do I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Clear second?
Second.
Second by Kelly, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present.